She's on now. If you're ever getting, like if this runs out of batteries... ...own property up there because they're...
Check, check, one, two, one, two. Check, check, check. Check, one, two, one, two. Check, one, two, one, two. No, I don't, I'm fine with him working it. That's all good to me. Check, one, two. Check, one, two, one, two, one, two. Check, check, check. Good evening. Do, 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 do.
Check, one, two, check, one, two. Check, one, two.
Check, one, two, check, one, two. Check, one, two, check, one, two. Yeah, this one's harder than that one. So, does this, does this sound better on your end?
This one sounds bad in here though.
Oh, it does? Um, the, the best way to do it is to try to zone them in on the, um... Because they're not designated, they, they don't have their own designated channels.
You just wait, if you want to go to there and talk to the mics, you just tell me what mic you're on. You can adjust it on the, um, on the wireless. So, we'll get either a stronger or weaker signal. I am, so this is going to be, um... I'll be able to tell anyways because we'll see on the things, but that's...
Sarah, was it all set for, from your end? So...
If you want to...
As long as it's fine.
If you want me to turn up any of the microphones, you can...
No, it sounds pretty good. Is it just, is it the other one? Oh yeah, this one's quieter.
Check, one, two, check, 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 one, two, one, two.
No, I'm good, but thank you.
She got these glasses specifically for the computer. And if the, the mouse is blue as tint, but you can't see it unless you look like this. Because she's at his office and she's trying to read the screen and give you stuff. She's at a table with him. And they weren't that expensive. See, kind of, this is a lady, so it's just there. And this one is, this is 2,800 or nothing. When it's off, so... But yeah, send me whatever you got. Yeah. She's giving, um, sunglasses that were permanent. She had the tradition of those glasses. And I think it was, um, we are, these ones. Yeah. So anyway, yeah. The general government. So, um, no. So Mark, we don't. What I'm going to do is I'm going to have folks just get in line behind the microphone and we'll line up. Instead of trying to... We'll do it old school. And then Ed is... And then Ed is... Said he was going to be online.
Are you going to, we're going to do, you do a roll call at the beginning for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
And then just, um...
Will you want to read the order? Or the, whatever we've got? Kind of what we did last time?
Certainly can. I ha- I happen to have it right here.
Thank goodness.
Uh, it's a long one.
Ed is coming, is going to be online and Ginny and Christine are running a little bit late. Will Sharif be in a suit tonight, I wonder? No. Don't have enough seats? One, two...
Byron?
No, you have four. You only have three seats. Is there any one of these?
Well, we have, we have this extra seat here.
Yeah. Ed won't be here.
Do you want me to fill in for him? I can be...
No, we have a seat here if we need to. We can just move on. Do we know if Sharif is showing, like, showing his person? If he does show, then somebody over here. No, you're good.
Yeah, no, this was actually Sharif that I wrote. That's probably why this came.
All right. But Ed is not showing.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think he does. I hope he has. Why is everyone sitting on the right? Is that, that's a political statement?
Close to the door.
It's a sign. It's a sign.
I have no intention of turning down.
Well, either way, it's a warning signal.
Yeah.
Best thing, thing. Together we can make sense of these votes.
How you doing, Councilman?
Good. It's there.
Uh, it's Mike Farland.
Excellent. And a suit it is.
All right.
Why do I feel like I want to be insincere and start with nice to see everyone again?
Do you want to?
Hello, Councilor Zede. I was hoping you would dress formally.
Last night I was in the basement.
We are...
All right. Want to we get this one started? All right. All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. Tonight is the continuation of the public hearing we're having on the parks reorg. Uh, I'm going to have Clerk Jones call the roll for the city council.
Okay, so this is the roll for the hearing continuing, which is September thirteenth. Counselor Zede. Counselor Cameron is absent. Counselor Dunneou. Counselor Khan. Wonderful. Counselor Lane. Absent. Counselor McCauley. Counselor Preston. Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Wallace. Wonderful. Counselor Wright. And Counselor Shan.
Present.
We have more than a quorum.
All right, Clerk Jones, would you like to read the order?
I would be happy to. The order dated August eighth, two thousand twenty-two states as follows. Whereas Article Five, Section five dash one, Organization of City Agencies, Home Roll Charter, authorizes the mayor to reorganize, consolidate, or abolish any city agency in whole or in part, or to establish such new city agency as is deemed necessary. And the mayor intends to establish an operating division with respect to the operation of the city parks for the efficient conduct of the business of the city and further improve the services provided by the city administration. And whereas the mayor has included herewith a message to the council explaining the benefits expected to result from this proposed change and the sections of existing ordinances that will need to be amended, now therefore be it ordered that the Newburyport Parks Department will be reorganized as described in the attached plan, which is attached to the public notice. Further additional responsibilities of the Parks Department will be brought into the mayor's office, Newburyport Youth Services, and the Parks Commission. Any needed amendments to the city's code of ordinances will be brought to the city council for consideration to effectuate this order and attached plan with respect to the reorganization of said Parks Department. This administrative order will come into effect in sixty days unless disapproved by the vote of this council. Submitted Counselor Heather L. Shan.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. So what we're going to do tonight is, since we don't have a sign-up sheet, I'm going to have folks go old school and stand behind the microphone here. Uh, I would go two minutes each and we will, uh, I will be timing everybody. I also got a request from our NCM hub that if you are using the public Wi-Fi, please don't. They're going to, they're using the public Wi-Fi to broadcast this. So if you are, I would request that you, uh, log off if possible. So we don't interrupt their, uh... All good. Okay, thanks, Sarah. All right, so if, uh, folks would like to, if, Mayor, would you like to speak first? Oh, okay.
All right. Welcome. Thank you all for dusting yourselves off from last night and coming back today. I appreciate that. Uh, welcome to month five of the Parks Reorg Plan. Um, it's nice to see so many familiar faces still in the room here. Uh, yeah, so here we are. Um, you know, we have last public hearing tonight. We've got Neighborhood and City Services next Tuesday. Uh, just a reminder, if you have suggestions for the plan or feedback, there's still plenty of time to get them into my office. I mentioned last night Counselor McCauley has been the only one to submit some amendments so far. Uh, and then the plan is after tonight, we'll compile all the questions or opportunities to maybe better explain, uh, explain some of the parts of the plan in an FAQ document. And like, the plan is to have that document in your hands by Friday. Uh, and again, any questions, please reach out. I'm looking forward to hearing everyone's comments tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so if you would like to speak, please come up to the mic. I ask you to state your name clearly, your address, and I will give you two minutes.
Donna Wilson Irwin, two ninety-six High Street, and I've lived here for twenty-four years. I am one of the volunteer producers who has worked on the Parks Fest for the past five years. I've also volunteered to raise funds for parks, find volunteers, donated funds, and have involved friends, neighbors, and newcomers to join in the festivities. As I continue to learn more about the situation with parks from reading the mayor's report, the Paradigm Report, listening to our community, I am not seeing evidence showing there is a compelling argument for the proposed reorganization. However, I applaud everyone, as a common goal is to ultimately create a quality of life for our community while staying fiscally responsible. Parks are the lungs of our city. They enrich our lives. No doubt, great parks create great cities. Just walk down the rail trail. We no doubt are a hotspot. Um, I guess my question was the comparisons of the other city parks. Are they equal to ours? In the Paradigm Report, I had so many questions, and I hope you do too, and I plan to speak with the mayor as well. Private contributions from people who are passionate about parks have a relationship with the Parks Director. They require active management, accountability. We, the community, deserve direct leadership, advocacy, long-range vision, and programming development. I feel this can only be accomplished by having a Parks Director whose total focus is on parks. I hope all our councilors will remain open-minded and listen and think about the ramifications of the proposed changes and vote no, so there can be further study without the time pressures brought on by this proposal. Thank you very much for your time.
And Ms. Wilson, what was your address again?
Two ninety-six High Street.
Thank you. All right. Next.
Okay, hi, everyone. I'm Ray Feltz, eighteen Boyd Drive in Newburyport. My wife Tara and I have three daughters in Newburyport Public Schools, and I wanted to share some experiences working with Mayor Riordan that may be helpful to this group. One of my volunteer positions is president of NGBA, which runs girls' basketball for grades K through eight in Newburyport. And we have dozens of volunteers that spend hundreds of hours coaching and running our program. Uh, one of those volunteers is Sean, who has been involved in NGBA for somewhere around ten years. So when I first started leading NGBA, Sean proposed an idea to restart a summer league that he once ran at Cashman Park. Uh, we, we as a board took his advice. It became very popular and have been at Cashman for the last three years. Uh, fast forward to Sean becoming mayor, and our girls' program is up to a hundred fifty players. Uh, so I reached out to Mayor Riordan with feedback on how things could be improved at Cashman to help handle our growing numbers. Uh, Sean sat down with me. He asked lots of questions, uh, gave me a real sense he was listening closely. Uh, months later, I see a Parks Department plan that makes sense to me personally and to our board, and I've read it in detail. It reflects the feedback that I shared, and I know a lot of other youth program directors feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Johnson. I live at forty-six Monroe Street. Carolyn Johnson, I live at forty-six Monroe Street, and, um, I would like to speak against this, uh, proposal. I feel that the parks, as they are now, under the present scheme, are, uh, really the jewels of Newburyport. They attract people from other towns. They're well-used by our own residents, and I just don't see that continuing unless we have someone in charge as an advocate, some one person who has the right to look over the whole scheme of things and advocate and make sure that things are going right. Um, I feel like, um, let me look at my notes here. Um, really, a, we need a department head that's really, uh, in tune and can, really knows everything about the parks. Um, in addition, we are planning a new waterfront park, and I feel like that alone is a reason for having a Parks Department head and a Parks Department separate from the DPS. Um, so thank you very much. I hope you'll consider my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
I'll get up before I lose my nerve. I'm Ann McCray. I live at, uh, three Simmons Drive in Newburyport, and I moved here in, um, nineteen eighty, and I've lived here longer than anywhere else in my life. And I always think it's been a wonderful choice to be in here in Newburyport. Uh, thank you for those responsible for this opportunity to respond to Mayor Riordan's proposal. And, uh, thank you for the larger venue and the better mic. I'm grateful to those who've provided a considered and comprehensive review of Mayor Riordan's plan, so we can better understand the role they play in the life and health of citizens of Newburyport. It's concerning that Mayor Riordan's proposal is based in part on the premise that the Parks Department has not succeeded in its mission and operation. In restructuring the Parks Department, its role would be parceled out to various other None of these departments has, as its central mission, the preservation and enhancement of the parks. Um, finally, in an era of growing divisiveness, our sense of community is enhanced when we can take part in common activities in common space. Where else could soccer players, fishermen and women, dog owners, teenagers, families, trike riders, and the elderly, among others, share in the activities and natural beauty our parks provide? So I hope you'll not accept this single rather narrow plan, but seek alternatives which will assure the citizens of Newburyport that our parks, all twenty-three of them, will flourish and continue to enrich our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCray. Next.
My name is Andrew Simpson. I live at one and a half Greenleaf Street. I think you all know by now that opponents of this plan have identified three main points that they disagree with. Eliminating the Parks Director position, downgrading the Parks Department to be under DPS, and dispersing thirty-four of the Park Director's duties across the city. The bottom line, I believe, is that if this plan passes, we will be left with a less efficient and impact, and less impactful parks operation. An operation without a leader, without an advocate, and most important, without real accountability. We would not really save any money or gain any benefits. There is one question I keep asking. Why are we here? Why are we discussing a plan to dismantle our perfectly fine Parks Department rather than discussing a strategy for the future of our parks, to make them better and realize their potential? The situation reminds me of a, uh, of an article I read when a company I worked for was considering reorganizing. The article is by a gentleman named Grant Freeland of Boston Consulting Group. It gets to the management principle that structure should follow strategy. Freeland concludes that reorganizations typically don't produce the desired results, yet leaders continue to develop them, very often behind closed doors. Here is the point, and I quote. "This, the efforts fall, uh, mush, more of, mush, more often, short more often than, uh, because they violate some of the cardinal rules of business and management. First, that structure must follow strategy, not the other way around. And that communications and buy-in are necessary for success. Leaders should focus on developing a strategy with clear goals and aligning the structure with that."
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
"This can't be done behind closed doors."
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
"I want to thank you for having people speak, and the public comment has been going two to one against the plan."
Thank you.
Hello. Can you hear me? My name is Sandra Thaxter. I live on three Oak Street in Ward One, and I've lived here since nineteen seventy-three. I wanted to say that the transformation of this city that has occurred within the last ten years, especially within the last five years, has completely changed the way I feel about living here, and it is the, both the tree, city tree committee and font, as well as the changes in the parks that have changed it. I feel freer because those parks have safe, healthy assets. I, I don't see our, we have sort of two views of the parks. One is recreation and sports, and another is these are our green spaces. The green spaces we need to have a healthy city going forward with climate change. I almost feel that we need to expand our vision of the function of these parks to make sure that we have the expertise to manage it in the possible more water or less water or making that green space balance the crowding and the additional housing that we have here in the city. And I noticed, I, I, I don't know, I've met DPW people. They're really good at mowing lawns and they're really good at weed whacking, but I don't think they have an idea of what that, that black spot on the rose bushes down in Joppa Park is, or how to maintain the hydrangea there, or how to weed a garden, where are the invasives. I don't think they have those skills. I think it would be very expensive to develop them, and I believe that some of the volunteers who are working had some of those skills. Thank you.
Next.
I just want to just make it clear, we still have our Parks Department, so the people you're talking about are still working and still servicing our parks, okay?
Hi, I'm Rob Fagan, two sixty-five High Street. I've been a resident in Newburyport for seventeen-plus years. Uh, I have to say I'm strongly in favor of Mayor Riordan's plan to reorganize. With two kids, we utilize the parks, playgrounds, and everything else on a regular basis, and I can say that I think the conditions are average at best based on the previous results. Combining the DPS and the Parks Department makes sense on many levels, provides more avenues for upkeep, shares resources and equipment, and potentially includes cost savings. My children play youth sports, and I've coached both soccer and Pioneer League baseball, and currently am the Fields and Facilities Director for the Pioneer League. Privately maintained facilities like Cherry Hill, Pioneer Park, Cashman Park are vastly different places than the likes of Perkins and Woodman due to the lack of maintenance. My main point of contact within the city has been Mike Hennessy over the last few months, who has been a tremendous asset to both the Pioneer League and I know the Soccer League as well. He's always responsive, interested in helping accomplish things that are needed, and I believe he'll continue to do a great job for the parks.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Hello. Diana Carey, 33 Temple Street. I have written to most of you today, and I thank those of you who did have the time to respond, but I came tonight because I want to follow up on a few issues. My notes are very jumbled, so forgive me, but I feel very strongly that it is important that we have a Parks Department in this city because it is everything about this city, and it is a reason for people to come here and enjoy our recreation. It's not only about the mowing and the plowing, but it's about the activities that those particular parks and opportunities provide for people to convene for concerts, for the Lantern Festival, and for a wide variety of other things that are hugely important to what Newburyport is all about. It's important for us to provide time to consider the appropriate approach, and therefore I ask for your no vote because that will provide the opportunity for you as a council and for us as a city to really come up with the best plan. If you go ahead with this now, I consider that this is an ill-considered plan, and it is just kind of a stopgap for what might occur. You need the input of the entire community, and surely you, as counselors, want some input yourselves into what this plan is all about. This sets a dangerous precedent for how decisions are made in the course. Sorry, this is a really directional microphone.
Gary, just a few more seconds.
Oh, okay. Well, then I really need to quickly say that it is really important that the mayor decree be turned down because this is not the way democracy works, even though nationally it seems to be increasingly direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carey.
I'm a short person, sorry. Leslie, I call 36 Warren Street. I've spoken to you twice before urging you to give a no vote to the mayor's proposal for the reorganization of the parks. Tonight, I'm going to give you another very important reason to vote no. The mayor has recently emailed you about his plan to create a Friends of Newburyport Parks group. This group would replace the conservancy for private fundraising for the parks. He intends that the conservancy transfer its funds to the Friends group and that the city would control the funds. This would slay the goose that lays the golden eggs. Private donations to parks would no longer qualify for tax purposes as a charitable contribution, and by and large, people do not give charitable donations to the city. Private donations to the parks have paid for the most recent structural improvements we have seen. Think Joppa Park. These kinds of donations will dry up. The moral foundation contributions will very likely disappear. Additional reasons to vote no are: the Parks Department was created because the parks needed more care than the DPS was able to provide. So we've tried parks management under the DPS, and it didn't work out. So doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results is the definition of not thinking. While I'm on the subject of the DPS, I think most of us would say that the DPS plate is pretty full, plenty full with the streets and the sidewalks. This plan was created without public input and based on the mayor's assertion that the parks were not working. That's not what we heard. We've heard that the parks, by and large, have improved noticeably under the Parks Director and the Parks Department arrangement.
Just a few more seconds, Ms. Ekel.
Okay. I say working, let's keep what's working and improve on that.
Thank you.
Finally, okay. This proposal is only one option for parks management. Before we do any kind of parks reorganization, we need to identify all of our needs and look at our options first.
Thank you, Ms. Ekel.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I'm scared to touch that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dana Reimer. I live at 2 Moran Road. I have two children, ages 14 and 11, and I've lived here for almost 10 years, and I'm in favor of this proposal. I've been a volunteer in Newburyport U Soccer, coaching for years. I've been a board member for almost five years and president for three years. Newburyport U Soccer currently has 900 Newburyport residents or students playing soccer this season, and each come with one or two guardians. So I've had a relationship with the Parks Department for years at this point. My experience in the past three months has been completely different, working with Mike Hennessy. My emails are returned the same day, my concerns are addressed quickly, my projects are moving forward when I've been told before that I have to figure it out. The communication has increased exponentially. I see his name come up in my inbox, and I'm shocked. I'm like, oh, oh, okay, all right, great. So I do represent parks that thousands of feet get stepped on every single week, and I'm so glad that there are folks here that have had a good experience in the past with the Parks Department because now I kind of feel like, now I know where all the attention has been going, where I've been sort of jumping up and down trying to get some help. My experience without a specific Parks Director the past three months has been significantly improved, and I really believe that we can support this reorganization and still have beautiful, wonderful parks. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lynn Skow. I live at 75 High Street. I just am stepping forward because I just wanted to speak out in favor of Mayor Riordan's plan to merge the Parks Department into the Department of Public Works. I think that I'd like to thank him for undertaking a project that looks out for the taxpayers. I've read through the proposal, and it does not appear that any of the services that are being provided to the city right now would be, in fact, cut, and that it's looking for efficiencies so that the services to the parks would hopefully improve. I'd like to also echo some of the comments that Mr. Fagan made. As a volunteer for youth sports here in the past, I've had to coordinate with other sports that didn't have access to field space because of issues getting permits to use the fields. The fields are not in good shape unless they're privately maintained, and they haven't been. I walked by, and it's not just the fields. I walked by the Brown School today and saw the pathetic little playground that replaced the wonderful one that was torn down a few years ago, and I was very sad. And I'd like to hope that this, right now, conversation that we're having opens up a larger conversation, which is support for the parks in general. I think that, you know, we've heard from everybody how important the parks are. I'd like to see that we have more parks in the city. You know, we've lost a lot of, we've lost the basketball courts at March's Hill over the past few years. We lost the playground at the Brown School. We've lost the basketball courts, which are, at the Brown School, which I believe are maintained by the parks. I know that the gyms in Newburyport High School get a parks fee as well, so I'm assuming the Brown School did as well. And we lost the fields at the Breznerhand, the baseball fields at the Breznerhand, and none of those have been replaced. So I think that, you know, instead of pickleball fighting with baseball about a scarce resource, we need to figure out a way to make a resource available for all the citizens of the city that need it.
Thank you, Ms. Skow.
And I would like to thank Mayor Riordan for opening up that conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for those on Zoom, I will get to you when we're done with those in the auditorium. So thank you for having your hand raised.
Hi, my name is Mary McDonald. I live at 30 Madison Street. I was in charge of lots of groups of children back in the 80s and 90s, and the parks were not a dependable place where you could go and feel that anything was safe. They were dirty, they were full of dangerous things, and all of the equipment was broken. I feel like the parks have improved considerably since then, and I am no longer having children who play soccer or baseball, but my grandchildren do. But recently, in the last three years, I started holding art in the park, art on the rail trail through the organization that I run called Tinker House, and I found it to be a very simple department to work with. They had a good reservation system. I didn't expect my email would be returned to me right away because I figured they had lots of people, but I always got an answer and a conversation about anything that I had questions with. But more so than that, I've been surprised at just how much all of our lives have started to center around being at all of these parks, and they are incredibly dependable places for people together. They were a wonderful sanctuary for us during the pandemic, and it just doesn't seem like they were broken at all. It seemed like they were getting better and better all the time, and so I am very much against taking away the Parks Department position, and I hope you'll vote no.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Hello. Can you hear me? That's right up my nose. Lila Wright, 55 Reservation Terrace, and I'm not here to talk about the beach today. I'm here to speak in support of the reorganization of the Parks Department. I've read through it. I do understand it is still in place. It is in place under the DPW. There is a group still doing the same things they were doing before, minus their leader, and I understand that's a sensitive subject for a lot of people, but I'd just like to touch on something. As a council, I've listened intently over the past six months, and you have, on several occasions, approved requests for funding for consultants to do studies in areas of their expertise. As recently as last night, there was a consultant fee of, I don't remember exactly what it was, but for the study of Plum Island FEMA properties and buying out people that are ready to leave. I think two weeks ago, it was the Affordable Housing Trust was looking for funding so that they could have a consultant with the expertise to help them navigate getting through their affordable housing situation and trying to build a better affordable housing product to offer. This is the first, I think, the first study that you funded this year. It's come in, and the mayor's trying to implement it, and there's instantly pushback. For every study that you fund going forward, are you going to have to think about how many hours of meetings you're going to have to deal with the pushback because people have preferences for different parks? We've raised three kids here. We've been to every single park in the city. Some are well-maintained, some are better maintained, some are poorly maintained. There's always room for improvement, and I really believe that putting all these pieces together will give us greater opportunities to improve upon the areas that maybe weren't getting the coverage previously.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
My name's Brianna Sullivan. I live at 41 Forrester Street. I don't want to reiterate what all the other people who are in favor of this plan said, but I support it. As a preliminary matter, I think it's interesting in the report, which I did read closely and think it's exceptionally well-thought-out and well-argued and well-supported by data and evidence, including the consultant's report and other information from city council notes, budget notes, et cetera, that apparently the department was never properly made a department to begin with, which makes this whole exercise feel a little foolish. But in any event, I think that this would make the system work better. I think it's well-thought-out. I think any suggestion that it was not is disingenuous, and I strongly support your vote in support of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ben Iacono from 4 Hallesi Drive. I have attended all the meetings on the Parks Reorganization Plan, have reviewed the consultant's recommendation and the details of the plans being proposed, and heard all the speakers. I have expressed my concerns with each council member. In all of these discussions, the main focus has been the benefits of moving the maintenance function into the DPS to take advantage of the synergy, equipment utilization, and manpower utilization. Parks Department is much more than this. The rest of the functions that are being distributed in different directions have very little, have had very little study and due diligence done, and have been developed without input and discussions with stakeholders and users. Splitting these functions up and without a go-to leader to coordinate creates significant inefficiencies and adds layers of responsibilities and negates any benefits of the other action. I urge the council to vote for a pause in this implementation plan until a more effective plan with proper input and stakeholders can be developed. Let's not go backwards and lose this gem that we have. Remember, great parks make great cities.
Hello, my name is Paula Esti, and I live at 3 Pine Street. I'm here once again to urge you to just take your time, and I would strongly disagree with one of the people previous saying that pushback is what this is. To me, what this is, is our community speaking to our leaders and telling you some of the things that we are concerned about. I don't think there's anything inherently wrong with this proposal at all, but I think it's lacking, and because of that, all of these voices are here encouraging you to take your time. And if taking your time so that the conversation can grow means saying no, then that's what I'm urging you to do. I think there's wonderful things about combining these two departments. Perhaps, for God's sakes, it should have happened a long time ago, but we're talking about maintenance and we're talking about vision, and those are two separate things that need to come to the table every time something important happens in our community. Thank you.
Hi, Karen Johnson, 120 High Street. I agree with Paula, and I guess I have to start. I'm Karen Johnson, 120 High Street, Newburyport. I agree with Paula. I'm actually really surprised to hear so many people saying that this is a no, don't get rid of our parks. I'm misunderstanding, but I thought this was to just reorganize the parks. My bone of contention that I would wish to ask you to vote no and reconsider a revised proposal. I completely agree that the consolidation of resources makes perfect sense, but as it is currently proposed and written, it should not be accepted or approved, that it should be reconsidered. Our city has benefited tremendously by having a Director of Parks, and I am under an understanding that that is what I'm addressing more than the consolidation of resources. I think Mike Hennessy, I know for a fact, have volunteered for years with parks. He's wonderful, his crew is wonderful, and it was under the direction of the Director of Parks. However, I think he's doing an incredibly wonderful job now under the guise of DPW, but it's not about that. I'm understanding that it's really about the Director of Parks position, $78,000 position, I believe, and as we all know, aside from managing one of the city's most treasured resources, 26 parks, a director's position also designed and implemented valuable programs that make Newburyport special for all of us, for our seniors, our children, our families, and the many visitors and tours that bring valuable dollars to our city, probably more than equal to the salary that's supposedly being saved. The Director also creates awareness for our parks and acted as a liaison to the valuable trust which helps support our parks. Funds that I don't think will be donated to the city city. The director, unlike other city departments, operated without administrative support staff, which is part of the reason I hear the voices saying she didn't get, or they didn't get emails returned, they didn't get phone calls returned. Well, the director didn't have administrative assistance.
Fewer seconds, Ms. Johnson.
Anyway, she acted without administrative staff to self-promote events, fundraisers, handle PR for the parks, and a multitude of other annual events that benefit our city like historic events at the Bartlett Mall.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
You are welcome. Thank you for letting me have this time. Please vote against this proposal and consider reorganizing it.
Good evening. Rick Tainer, 10 Dexter Street. The council order states that the primary responsibilities of the Parks Department will be placed under the auspices of DPS. This implies that the department's primary role is park maintenance and that everything else the department does is secondary. I think this attitude is a big part of why so many residents have raised concerns about the reorganization plan. The plan shortchanges the park director's role, making it seem that the director, the former director, only coordinated a few recreational programs and events. In fact, the director's responsibilities also included planning, fundraising, management, and coordinating with outside funders such as the Morrell Foundation. Splitting these functions up over several departments and staff would be inefficient and would make effective parks and recreation planning and programming more difficult. The plan compares Newburyport to several similar-sized cities and towns with a table showing that most have placed park maintenance under the Department of Public Works, and this may be fine. However, the very next column of the comparison table shows that in every one of the comparison communities, the recreation programming functions are assigned to a Parks Department, a Recreation Department, or a Parks and Recreation Department. To be consistent with its analysis of the maintenance function, the reorganization plan could have followed the examples of these peer communities. But instead of providing that focal department for the recreation function, the plan proposes to spread it over several existing and new personnel. In contrast to the proposal for the maintenance side of the Parks Department, this recommendation doesn't support the stated goal of maximizing efficiencies. Rather than eliminating the highly effective Parks Department and dispersing the director's roles and responsibilities, it would make more sense to restore the focus that we've had for recreation activities and keep a Parks or Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you.
Marion Layton Levy, 323 Merrimack Street, Ward 4. And I've lived here, I guess, for 35-plus years. And my son and I used the parks a lot when he was growing up. And I still enjoy going there and reading and seeing what everybody else is doing. And yes, it was a blessing to everybody during the pandemic, no doubt. I do, and I'd like to sort of answer somebody who said that there's an extraordinary amount of pushback in this case, because that is not my experience from the reorganization of the waterfront park, for example, when the Waterfront Trust, the redevelopment authority in the city, went through years of working that out. And I'm not saying this should take years, but it does seem to me that it has happened extraordinarily quickly. And that if something is not broken, why fix it? It seems to me that the structure is there. It seems to me that the director, having somebody specifically in charge of the parks as opposed to the maintenance of the parks in terms of DPS, has been working. And I would like to have heard more input from the council itself as opposed to just the mayor's office. And it seems to me that a pause is appropriate to have more input, not only from the public, but also from the council and from the mayor's office, and that this is deserving of further study. And I hope that that will happen, so please vote no. Thank you.
Good evening. Eileen Connor, 13R Broadfield Street. I want to express my strong support for the mayor's reorganization plan and for your yes vote this evening. You've heard many reasons for and against this proposal, and I've expressed mine in communications to all of you in previous meetings. My point tonight is a more global zoom-out one. Any decision tonight is made based on identifying a need, examining data, and hearing feedback. A decision at this point is reasonable. There's no natural endpoint to the paralysis of analysis, so to speak. And we've all seen that not deciding is not a neutral act and has consequences itself. It's gotten us in trouble here in Newburyport before, and I voted for Mayor Riordan specifically because he pledged to take a fresh look at our city's challenges, and that's precisely what is happening with the yes vote. Thank you.
Jean Costello, 522 Merrimack Street. And I've been listening and trying to say, you know, what can I say that hasn't been said before? The best I can do is to amplify what Marion Levy and what Paula Esti said. Please, time. This deserves it. There's so many questions and holes and things that we still need to discuss. And I don't think doing things like putting out an FAQ sheet or offering amendments to this plan is going to get us where we need to be. We've got a lot to lose if we rush it. And I don't think that we have a lot to lose if we wait and bring all our good attention to it. So please vote no, wait, and let's do the job we can do together. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Alice Mullen and I'm at 7R Broad Street in Ward 3. And I want to, my sentiment is for a no vote. And I agree with Paula Esti and what Jean Costello had said. And I know my experience is with the Edible Avenue out on the rail trail. And we talk a lot to the people that are using the rail trail. And a lot of people come to our city to admire our parks. And we ask them, like, are they local or visiting? And they, you know, usually are visiting. And they just are in wonder of what our parks really are, and they really treasure what we have and we take for granted. So I'm asking the council if you could vote no and also give it, well, more time, you know, to make a better plan. Thank you.
Hello. Paul Swindell-Hurst at 12 Sparford Street, where my wife and I bought a beautiful home, a budding Mosley Woods Park 13 years ago. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thank you for attending this meeting tonight. This is such a busy September, and I appreciate you giving up yet another night with friends and family to be part of this discussion. I'm also a Newburyport-based business owner. I've been serving, I have served as general chairman of Yankee Homecoming, and I was elected to serve on the Board of Directors of both the Newburyport Art Association as well as the Custom Host Maritime Museum. I'm also privileged to serve as a Parks Commissioner. I do all this because I love Newburyport just as you do. That's why I urge you on September 27th to vote down the administrative order that's before you, encourage you to then invite the mayor back to refile the order and submit a revised plan, one that reflects proper input from stakeholders and concerned citizens. Community Paradigm Consultants did not interview one single member of the Parks Commission as they developed their recommendations on how to reorganize the department. The administration did not interview one single member of the Parks Commission as he wrote the plan that he submitted to you for approval. When they asked me to serve in the Parks Commission, Mayor Holliday, Lisa Reed, and Kim Turner told me that the Parks Commission should take up the long-term work of planning and programming the parks for the next 10 to 15 years. Candidates for Mayor Sean Riordan and Charlie Tontar told me the same thing when I asked them about their view of the commission's work as well. The problem in this reorganization plan is that it's not built for the future. It's focused inwardly on operational efficiencies and small financial savings instead of setting us up for long-term future success. In closing, I've written five pages of extensive comments in a letter which you'll have by email, 7 o'clock tomorrow morning. I'm available to any of you for discussion, and I thank you for your consideration tonight.
Not seeing anybody else, I am going to give to Nikki Whelan. You've had your hand up on Zoom for a long time. I'm allowing you to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Nikki Whelan, 12 Broadfield Street. I've been a resident here often on my whole life. I'm also a Parks Commissioner, the newest Commissioner on the list, newest member of the commission. And I was asked to give my thoughts on this matter. So I've listened to a lot of people, a lot of citizens. I was at the last community meeting. I'm here to express my support of this plan for three main reasons. One, I think, especially from the last community meeting, there was a consensus about the operational efficiencies and learning more about that, about hiring union workers who are already under DPS and the not needing the necessity to rent equipment, those sorts of ideas. Secondly, I already, as a new member of the commission, that there is a strong partnership with DPS. Every commission meeting I've been to, my candidacy has been there. He is often referred to with a lot of questions and decisions. And so I think moving forward with this plan would only increase the efficiency of that partnership. He's a very knowledgeable person, in my opinion. In short, I don't have to know him. So I don't understand the fear so much that parks would fall apart, since I already feel that there's a strong partnership there. And lastly, the reason I would say I support this plan is because I believe in the Parks Commission as the leadership and the vision for the report. My experience is the members are invested, thoughtful, and detailed. And I trust that the commission will take the role to continue to preserve and enhance the parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Cootie, allow you to speak.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, was that a yes?
Yes, yes.
Excellent, excellent. Good evening, everyone. I have a sick child at home, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to come to the meeting. My name's Phil Cootie. I live at 22 Phillips Drive, and that's up near Mosley Park on the other side of the highway. Some people say west, Newburyport. Just a little bit about myself, I'm a community organizer. Some of you may know me from the organizational work that I did with the Phillips Drive community. I've been a long, I consider myself a longtime collaborator with the city. I've always thought of the communities that I've organized with as partners for the city. I was approached by the neighbors and families recently lower of Atkins in regards to initiatives that they had with the parks. And I helped those folks organize and find their voice with the city. In all cases, I've always found the city to be a great partner. And I'm here to express my support for Mayor Riordan's plan and to give folks in Newburyport the assurances that removing the Director of Parks, this optimization, doesn't mean that the city doesn't care about parks and doesn't care about what residents think. In fact, if anything, I found that having the Director in the parks almost made interacting with the Parks Commission and other folks in the city less approachable to residents by adding a layer of bureaucracy between people wanting to effect change in the city and myself.
Mr. Cootie, I need you to start wrapping it up.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Cootie. Your two minutes are up. Thank you. All right, I don't see any more on Zoom. You did. I don't see any more on Zoom right now. If there are more here in the auditorium, please step up.
Ken Irwin, 296 High Street. I was very disappointed to hear of the shortsighted and rushed plan to roll the Parks Department under DPS and to remove the position of Parks Director. The mayor said he expected the reorganization to result in cost savings and a more efficient parks operation, but gave little in the way of supporting figures. Neither did the report from Paradigm. The Parks Director brought in about $70,000 last year for the conservancy, which was close to her salary. Some of the jobs previously done by the Parks Director will now be done by the newly-created Special Projects Coordinator, whose part-time salary prorated would be greater than the Park Directors. The other tasks previously done by the Parks Director are distributed across other departments, which are reportedly already maxed out. Would these departments then need to hire additional help? Where will the savings really be? Are there really savings? The administration tells us we're seeing savings already. If these are savings, that would indicate that there isn't a need for the restructure because the people are working together. We need a Parks Director exclusively dedicated parks to the forceful and knowledgeable advocate for when meetings take place. Parks administration is more than landscaping and cutting. I think that's been discussed several times. Residents take no ownership in or contribute volunteer hours to patch a sewer or water leak or pothole, but they do go and they plant, they want trees planted, they work on planting perennials. The Parks Conservancy is also so critical to the quality of our parks. Working with the Parks Conservatory and Morrell Foundation has donated close to $2 million for the beautification of Newburyport. It's very important that a Park Director have the eyes and ears, as they have been, for the Morrell Foundation. The only change necessary when considering what to do with Parks Department is to focus more resources and support upon it.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin.
Parks has the most direct, widespread, and visible relationship with the city of Newburyport. Please vote no and take the time to please do this right.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Anyone else? And if there's anyone in the Zoom call that wants to raise their hand, please do.
My name is Paul Bevelacher. I live at 126 Merrimack Street, Unit 3. I didn't come here with prepared remarks. I wanted to listen to hear what everybody had to say. I've been to all three of these hearings, and I have some kind of a sense of how city government works. I was on the Charter Commission 12 years ago to help to write the charter you're functioning under. I know how the sections of the Charter were debated, what the intent was. I understand intent changes from time to time, but I know what we hoped would be accomplished over nine months and over three, average of three meetings, three hours a night during the time. I also helped to write substantially the ordinance governing the tree commission and street trees over a three-and-a-half-year period. So I have some sense of how these things work. One thing I have yet heard yet, I was waiting to have somebody tell me how the parks were going to be enhanced, how the vision was going to be improved, and how you were going to accomplish goals that would help to make the city a better place to live. I haven't heard for that. I've heard more, and I've reorganized large organizations. Operational efficiencies is a myth. We all know that. It's all about people. If people do the job and if they're focused, they can make a very, in an organization that's not as well-structured as possible work, you can create the most efficient, on paper-looking organization. But if people aren't doing the job, and if they don't have the heart in it, they don't have the commitment, it's not going to happen. Take your time. Vote this down now or delay it. Do whatever you have to do procedurally, but take some time to think about what you've heard from people. And I don't hear pushback. And I don't hear pushback. Here's, one person said, "I'm so happy the conversation's been opened." First thing I knew about this conversation was that the Director's position had been eliminated.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin.
Is that how you start a conversation? Or do you say, "Let's look at how to improve the parks"?
Thank you, Mr. Bevelacqua.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else on the Zoom call? Anyone else in the auditorium? All right. I would suggest we close the hearing then. Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. I believe the next meeting will be next Tuesday with NCS at 5:00 in Council Chambers. We'll take a roll call vote, and so everyone knows that Counsel Lane did join. I just cannot get him promoted. Tried a few times, and Counsel Cameron did as well.
Thank you.
So roll call vote.
On the motion, Counsel Azide, Counsel Cameron, Counsel Doniu, Counsel Khan, Counsel Lane, Counsel McCauley, Counsel Preston, Counsel Vogel. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Wallace, Counsel Wright, and Counsel Shan.
Yes. Thank you all for coming. So moved. All those in favor, roll call to adjourn.
Roll call to adjourn. Adjourn, Counsel Azide, Counsel Cameron, Counsel Doniu, Counsel Khan, Counsel Lane, Counsel McCauley, Counsel Preston, Counsel Vogel, Counsel Wallace, Counsel Wright, and Counsel Shan were adjourned at 7:00.
Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone was asking, I would say I was.